Good evening, everyone. It is 7:06 PM. And I hereby call to order the August 2019 Meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me now and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will begin with the Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Bruno, please.
In the office, there were 503 trash tags that were sold. Two payrolls were processed. Deputy Clerk has been very busy with projects for both the planning and zoning wars. Monday, September 2nd, the office will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Not disappointed about that because I happen to think that the Clerk's office has been basically traveling nonstop in fast lane lately.
Second.
Yard sale day, summer rec camp, cleanup day, they're done, the events went well. And as everyone knows, there have been other projects going on in the village, and I happen to really like the crosswalks. Speaking of events, I'm confident that you of you are going to have your own thoughts that you want to share about the 100th Anniversary Weekend celebrating Tivoli Fire and Red Hook Fire Department's, their centennials. It was absolutely wonderful. So many companies in the parade and people that were there to watch and support their respective companies, but to show their support for Red Hook and for our very own TFD. It really was a true pleasure being involved in the weekend. It's great to see so many men and women representing their companies, but they are there to share in our celebration. And what I thought of the evening during the fireworks was, I thought about the firefighters that we lost as of late. And although the energy through the weekend really did render it to be a very magical time, it also provided, I think, a very poignant reminder. I enjoyed being a member there, and as I've said in the past, it's an honor to serve with those men and women of our TFD. And if you thought that there wasn't anything that could top that, drum roll Deputy Major. Thank you. I would like to take just one more moment to wish Mayor Griffith very happy birthday this coming Friday. The Village of Tivoli has been described many times as a gem, and you sort of are as well.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And I will underscore what you said. The Clerk's office between yourself, Lorgel Tyler, and certainly Bonnie, our Treasurer, it has been frenzied and frantic in here. I don't know what's going on, but boy, we've had a lot of balls in the air. Appreciate the work that you all do. Okay, moving on to the minutes. We have six sets of minutes. That's how busy we were last week. In the workshop, we identified a few things we would like to adjust in the July 17th regular board meeting minutes. So we're going to pull those out and bring those back for approval, subject to amendment at a later meeting. So we are going to take the other five. And I'll just read those off. We've got July 22 special meeting, July 26 special meeting, July 31 public hearing, July 31 special meeting, and August 14 workshop. We'll take all those minutes together for approval if there is a motion.
So move.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those five sets are approved, and we'll be back with the July 17 regular board meetings next time. Moving on to a Treasurer's Report. This month, out of the general fund, we spent $84,060.86. And I do truly believe this is the last time I'll be reading F and J. I think I said that last month. But you'll see how small these amounts are getting as things are moving to the new managers. Out of the F Fund, $2,681.17. And out of the G Fund Sewer, $1,990.91. For a grand total of $88,732.94. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to a Zoning Report, please. Trustee Azzarati.
Yes, our Code Enforcement Officer was busy. He reviewed and issued four building permits, performed nine buildings and investigations. Zero complaints were submitted or investigated. Zero zoning violations were issued. Four municipal searches were requested and completed. And three fire inspections are scheduled, and these are beginning to happen.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Azzarati. If anyone ever has a code violation, or you see something, or you don't know, our Code Enforcement Officer is very easy to reach through this easy-to-remember email, which is B-I-Z-E-O.
And you can sing it.
It rhymes with bingo. So I wouldn't have been singing, but... B-I-Z-E-O, okay. @tivoli-NY.org. And it's particularly good to send an email because then there's a record that you've reached out and made contact, and that your complaint or your concern, you know, email is good because it creates a record. That's the zoning report. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only. We have eight things on the agenda. I'll go quickly through them. So if any of them... We've got a couple budget modifications, and then the next two have to do with moving our water and sewer accounts over to the Water Authority, who will be doing all the billing. So they're going to get all the bills, so they need to have the funds that belong to all of us, the water and sewer users, to pay those bills. We're also going to be opening up two capital accounts for all the 3.8 million in grant funding we got relative to water and sewer. So they've got their own bank accounts to live in, so we can really track the grant money coming in. Well, it actually goes like this. We spend, then we get reimbursed. And then we have a couple related to the fire at the firehouse. Judging the getting the reconstruction of that firehouse underway, we're considering it an emergency procurement, which means that we are not going to go out and take two or three months and do full bid specs and shop it far and wide and get proposals back. We are going to go with, you know, done some quick and dirty diligence, and we're going to get that thing under construction ASAP. That's the idea with that. And the next one is who we expect to use for that. Actually, it's going to, on the recommendation of our engineer and other diligence we've done, it's going to be Belfour Property... I'm forgetting the reconstruction. Who is the rest... Thank you. Belfour Property Restoration. Who's the company that the insurance company sort of has been recommending and has worked with before? We have a public hearing for a community development block grant. That's the block grant program where we have, you know, in the past, we've done sidewalk or the bus shelter in sidewalk, or the sidewalk on Pine Street, or years ago, we had some improvements to the park. And so those applications go in every fall, end of October. We are required to and interested to have a public hearing to, you know, give the public a chance to say, hey, you should apply for this, that, the other thing. And we have found some of the people's money in a bank account that was opened in 1990 that we don't actually know its purpose. It's been there for a long time. So we want to take it out of that dusty bank account and put it back in the general fund where it can do some good for all of us.
It's more than a generation since anybody knew where it was going.
And then the AUD is the Annual Financial Report Update Document, which we conclude our fiscal year May 31st. Here is a copy of it. And we do a review of this, you know, before we submit it, and we found a couple changes. So we're just going to approve making this accurate before we send it into the state comptroller. With that quick overview, if there's any public comment on agenda items, you have our attention. Okay. Here we go.
Rockwell.
Rockwell.
Budget mods.
Budget mods. It's early in the fiscal year, so there aren't too many here. Trustees, we went over these in the workshop. We've done a little preliminary engineering on a possible expansion of the firehouse after the rebuild. And then we have some $2,100 for Pine Street CDBG, which we paid the engineer, but we'll be getting that back in a grant reimbursement. Is there a motion to approve these budget modifications?
So move.
That was Azzarati, seconded by Cole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a start date on Pine Street?
Well, the latest one I heard was the 27th of August. It has been, as these projects often do, skating along through the summer. And whether it's the Central Hudson, the county, our contractor...
The trees, the rain.
The trees, the rain.
The air.
Yeah, there's always something. But we are getting closer. Yes. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the Treasurer to open capital accounts for water and sewer purposes. Again, this is for, we're fortunate enough to secure 3.8 million in water and sewer funding towards all our capital improvements we need, as well as low, zero interest financing after that. And we want to make sure we have it all straight in our accounting. Is there a motion to authorize the Treasurer to open capital accounts for water and sewer?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do a, we don't have to roll call in here. Would you like roll calls, or would you like all together? You like roll call?
I do.
Oh, very good. Then that's just what you're going to get. Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Azzarati.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next one, authorizing dispersment of funds from the village's water and sewer funds to Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. I want to thank the Treasurer for sharing my headache today as we try to calculate exactly how much we have in each fund this minute because it does change by the hour depending on who walked in with their water bill. So by our reckoning, we, the users of the village water system, have $174,596.10 in the bank. And in the sewer, $80,914.54 in the bank. And we are going to move those two amounts over to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. It's going to be managing all the billing, all the bill paying. And so they need this money to work with. With that said, is there a motion to authorize the dispersment of funds from the village's water and sewer to Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority?
So move.
That was Schneider followed by Cole. Any discussion? I think it's important to make clear that we're not handing them a bunch of cash, right? This is money that is to operate the water and sewer systems. They are managing it. You know, it's been a while. All those birds are really active there. It's been a while since these, this concern came up in conversations, you know, over the last two years when we were talking about this transfer. But we're not, like, giving them money for whatever they want. This is literally a change of management. The money belongs to everyone who uses water and sewer here in the village, and that's where it's going to stay and what it's for. So just with that clarification, Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Azzarati.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution is adopted. Resolution authorizing emergency procurement for firehouse reconstruction. As you know, we had a fire on July 5th. The building is unusable. We have had to move on to getting a temporary building, which I'll talk about a little later, which is now next door to this building, to keep those fire trucks and equipment out of the elements and particularly keep them warm. As the winter comes, the trucks need to stay warm.
And secure.
And secure. An administrative space. We were fortunate enough that our friends in the diocese of St. Sylvia's over there are letting us use the rectory. We worked out a deal with them on very nice terms for us where that space can be used for office space by the fire department. However, we don't want to sort of stay in these new homes as grateful as we are to have them. We got to get that building rebuilt. The village's procurement policy under state law does have an emergency procurement provision. So in the case of a public emergency arising out of an accident or other unforeseen occurrence or condition whereby circumstances affecting public buildings, public property, or the life, health, safety, or property of the inhabitants of a political subdivision or district therein require immediate action and cannot wait upon competitive bidding or competitive offering, contracts for public work, or the purchase of supplies, material, or equipment may be left by the appropriate officer, board, or agency of a political subdivision or district bearing. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Village Board of Trustees, that the Village Board of Trustees hereby determines that as a result of a public emergency, immediate action is required, which cannot await competitive bidding necessitating the use of emergency procurement procedures for reconstruction of the village firehouse. The firehouse reconstruction work shall be subject to inspection by the village engineer, compliance with applicable code, and compliance with applicable prevailing wage and other laws and regulations. We want to just establish for the record that this is, we are choosing to do this under our emergency procurement clause in our procurement policy.
I think it's worth saying also, simply because this, it took me a while to come to this recognition. This will be paid out of insurance funds. So to the degree that village revenues are used to pay for the insurance, it's our money. But in the sense of how much is actually being given back to us by the insurance company to achieve this, our job is really to make sure that it's achieved, that the firehouse has done well and so forth. And to some degree, it's the insurance's companies' problem to make sure that it's done with an effective or efficient use of their pooled funds at this stage. So this is really an exception that's driven kind of by how you come up with the money as much as how it's done. So our responsibility shifts from making sure the bid is cheapest to making sure the job is done correctly.
And maybe before we're in two feet of snow.
Yeah, and done efficiently and quick. Yeah.
So with that explanation and having read some of the resolution there, is there a motion authorizing emergency procurement for firehouse reconstruction? I heard the Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Cole. Any further discussion? This is the first time we've used that clause, I'm pretty sure. And it's, there was an unexpected fire. That seems exactly why you have that clause in your policy. Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Azzarati.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The resolution is adopted. Our next resolution, and intimately related to the former, authorizing a contract for firehouse reconstruction. We have received a letter of recommendation from the village engineer Crawford and Associates. Despite the due haste that we want to demonstrate here, we did bring in another vendor who looked at another contractor, who actually got back and said that in the requested timeframe, they would not be able to provide a proposal. But we did try to look at someone else just to get context on the firm and the price that the insurance company was bringing to us. And then also, we checked thoroughly all the references for this company, Belfour Property Restoration, and they all checked out positive. So with that, we are prepared to inform Belfour that we would like to go with them to do this rebuild. The next step is they will send us a contract, which we will also make sure complies with all of our requirements as a municipality. And I imagine there may be a little back and forth on the wording of the contract, if I know our village council at all, which is always a good thing. So this resolution, while it says authorizing contract for firehouse reconstruction, it's really just the first step in that. This is not the actual contract yet. I just want to make that clear. But the resolution says we can, at a future date, execute a contract with Belfour Property Restoration for reconstruction of the firehouse consistent with the scope and proposal on fire with the village clerk at a cost not in excess of $610,965.77 with the form of the contract to be approved by the officer executing the same after consultation with the attorney for the village. So again, as Trustee Azzarati pointed out, that $610,000 is all under our insurance policy that we've been paying all along. With that, is there a motion to select Belfour Property Restoration?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Azzarati. Any further discussion? Expect we will, when I inform the insurance company that we're looking at Belfour, we should have that contract, I think, within a week. And we may need to have a special meeting because I don't want to wait till September workshop. So be prepared for that. As soon as I know it's coming, I'll get in touch with you, and we'll set up a special meeting to approve that. Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Azzarati.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The resolution is adopted. We look forward to working with Belfour if everything is...
Tickety-boo.
Tickety-boo. You beat me to it. Ockidory, tickety-boo. Everything is squared on the level. We look forward to working with them. Next, we have establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Application. This public hearing is for the purpose of giving the opportunity to residents to come to us and say, hey, you should apply for this, that, or the other thing. And we have some of our own ideas, which we will share with you as well. But the grant isn't due until the end of October. So by having our meeting in September, we've got time to say, gosh, the people had a better idea than we did. It's not the first time, and maybe we'll spin this project in a different direction. But we hope you come. We are proposing to do it at our next regular meeting, September 18th, right here in this room at 7:00 PM. And the community block grant is federal money handed to counties that they then distribute to municipalities. And Tivoli's done pretty well with these over the last 15 years or so. We've gotten a number.
It's not only identifying what's important to spend money on in the village, but also how you can present that project in such a way that you actually get the money. So when we do these things, we look over all of the things that need to be done. But we also say, okay, they're focused on these kinds of things. And yes, we have a project like that. So that's how, which is, I agree, how we...
Yeah, well said. So for example, the county was saying over the last couple of years, improving transportation in the county was a big thing. We said, help us renovate our bus shelter and that whole facility. And they were like bingo. So it is a matter of matching those up.
Yeah, and that's a good strategy, and the fact that we've won two in a row, and I think prior to that, maybe two and three years, is an indication that we do a pretty good job of that sort of salesmanship on the projects that we present. Symbiotic thinking, shall we say. Yes, and it's to the village. It's additional money because these are things that we would have to do anyway. And this way, we get to use federal tax money instead of village tax.
Yeah, so probably over the last 15 years, it's been $700,000?
I would say so.
I would say. That didn't come out of our pockets, in our village taxes anyway?
Yeah.
With all that, is there a motion to establish the date for September 18th, 7:00 PM?
So move.
Is there a second? That was Cole followed by Major. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
Trustee Azzarati.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I see we have the notice of the public hearing is here to be posted. All right. Then we've got a couple motions. A motion is slightly less formal than a resolution. For fans of the Village Board who want to speak our strange language. So we were going to move that the $7,540.59 plus accumulated interest from the capital account ending in number 2160 is moved from that capital account and back into the general fund where we can use it for things that benefit us right now instead of leaving it in this bank account for many, many years. Is there a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
That was Azzarati followed by Cole. Any further discussion?
Do you feel much less casual? More casual?
Yeah. Well, watch this. All in favor?
Aye.
Takes all the pressure off.
Let's all slouch on the next one.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, and lastly, a motion to amend the Annual Financial Report Update Document and submit it to the state comptroller.
So move.
That was Schneider followed by Azzarati. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And this document is actually pretty interesting. If any resident wants to come in and see it, we have it at the Clerk's office. It's literally all your money. And where it is, how much we've got left in the bank, it's everything that happened over the fiscal year. And it's a little tricky because our fiscal years in the village are June 1 to May 31. So we call it like 1718, 1819. Or we may just call it 19, but that means 1819, not 1920. Yes. But if you need to count sheep, you could come count us. It may have the same effect, though. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00 PM. And I want to let folks know that I will be away, and this will be the first board meeting I'll be missing since being trustee in 2011. And that it will be chaired by our very capable Deputy Mayor. So come give her a hard time on the 18th, huh?
Crazy? No. I was actually going to come through.
So that'll be on September 18th. We also have that public hearing on the CDBG. There'll be a workshop preceding that at 6:00 PM. And we have a workshop on September 11th, 2019, 7:00 PM. And again, I just want to remind the trustees that as I see that contract coming from Belfour, we're going to have a special meeting. I thought about setting it tonight, but I don't want to set it, and then we don't have the contract yet. It's not a work. Moving on to trustee reports. Trustee Azzarati, please.
Well, I would like to talk about street painting, which is scheduled this year for September 2018. And comes right in the middle between an absolutely fabulous parade for our fire department and the Department of Red Hook last Saturday. It was real, it was really thrilling to see those 43 fire companies and 75 trucks and so many bands. And they were all good, which was great fun. And street painting gets wedged right in the middle there because after street painting, we're going to inaugurate a bust of Eleanor Roosevelt on the 70th anniversary of the UN Declaration of Human Rights. And there's something very nice about being hook ended that way. I sent letters out to about 20 different people who have habitually given donations for street painting. We raised about $4,000. This year, we're doing it without the Arts Council. This year, we submitted, but they rejected us. So, which is a whole other story. But I think we actually graduated from their funding because they had funded us for 10 years. And we always asked for the minimum, and we shared and we could do it. So they kind of said, you know, let's put them on elsewhere.
They should spread it around and help some other fledgling event because our event is far from fledged.
But I always get very surprises. We have some extraordinarily generous people in this area. But I always get very surprises. We have so extraordinarily generous people in this area. I always like to feature Classic Auto because they give us about twenty-five percent of our funding and do it just because they think it's a phenomenal festival. But I also this year got a little note from Claudia Stickles, who happens to be the daughter of Claude Potts. Claude Potts was a great supporter of this festival, but of course, we lost him last December. So he's not giving, but I gave her a chance to give anyway. And she sent some money along with the note, um, thanking me for the kind thoughts about her dad, but also about his admiration of Eleanor, because I wanted to make sure she knew about the October twelfth event. And she pointed out that his godfather was none other than Valentine Gil Hall, an uncle of Eleanor's, which gives just that much more texture and flavor to both this festival and this village. So I thought I would share that with you. Um, donations are accepted. Just, uh, send a letter, a check to the village hall, to the village of Tivoli with a subscript street painting, and we'll be happy to receive it. We're on our way. I also am open to any kind of volunteers. I know the bakers have been there early in the morning on, uh, the day of each festival to clean the street and help, um, paint them. We are looking for an additional registrar because our, um, our well-schooled one, Felicia Keising, has a conflict that day. This is a job that requires diligence and tact and warmth and firmness. So if you have all of those qualities.
Iron fist, velvet.
And these are, these are things we give, give away for free and people often feel very strongly about where they want to be and, uh, and the, the fact that they get them. And we know that's because it's such fun and they like to share it with their friends.
And how about registration? That's open and where people know?
Registration means open. If you go to W W W Tivoli New York dot org, you'll see a little note for it. You can do it there. Or if you are a friend on Facebook at Tivoli Street Painting, you can get the link there. It's a Google Doc. You just fill it in and it automatically selects, uh, a square for you, shows you a map of where the squares are, so you can say, I want my mirror. It's just like registering for a mirror.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, trustee Schneider, please.
Absolutely. The Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report for the month of July. A total of seven charges were received and twenty-nine charges disposed. Two thousand three hundred forty dollars was collected and remitted to the state comptroller.
Thank you very much. Trustee Cole?
Okay. Uh, we had a very busy month with zoning and planning. The zoning review committee met last week and I'm very happy to report after a summer of hard work and a thank you to all the committee members who worked on this. We have a draft proposal for the new site plan law for Tivoli. The goal of this law is basically to help homeowners and business owners uh, really understand the process. Is, is it a major site review, a minor site review? And streamline that process, uh, both for residents, business owners, and the planning board as well. Uh, this will come to the Board of Trustees for review. And of course, as is always the case when a new law is, uh, being proposed, there will be a public hearing. We would encourage anyone to come. That date has not been set yet, but to come and review the law and voice any questions that you may have about that. The next meeting of the zoning review committee is Tuesday, September seventeenth at seven P M, right here in the historic Watts de Peister Hall. Uh, we're very excited because an issue that we have been working on for quite some time and we know that other villages and towns in the area have as well, uh, is really the issue of short-term rentals. Uh, we've done a good bit of work to date. Our next meeting, we will begin to really, uh, hone in on drafting, putting some language around, some ideas around what we envision for short-term rentals in the village of Tivoli. A couple of things, as always, every zoning review committee meeting is open to the public. Committee meetings, if you want to come and observe, you're welcome to do so. You're not allowed to participate at that point, but certainly to come and observe. And some of our folks here tonight have done just that. As we move forward with discussion of short-term rentals, there will most definitely be a public forum to discuss that and gain public input. Would encourage you to check the village website and be aware of when that meeting will be. It will be later in the fall. And then as that law, proposed law is drafted, there'll be a public hearing on the law as always. So very excited, doing some major work, I think, with the Z R C this summer. And again, thank you to everyone who's been a part of that. In terms of economic development, um, all I can say is, is wow. Tivoli has had a great summer.
For sure.
Uh, it has just been amazing. If, uh, we have talked to, uh, what I would say are our long-term business owners who've been in Tivoli ten, twenty years plus. We've talked to some of our newer businesses and almost all have said they're having one of, if not the biggest summers that they've had in terms of foot traffic, uh, as well as profits coming into the business as well. I think we all feel this. Uh, if you tried to find a parking spot on Saturday in the village, you, you certainly can see that. And just a reminder, folks, there are lots behind. Uh, actually, uh, some of, you know, behind Murray's and behind the wine shop, we have municipal lots. So if you can't find a spot on Broadway, it's because things are bustling in the village. We have additional parking for everyone. So things have been going great. We're very excited about that. And I don't know about you. I've seen a lot of you out there grabbing your piece of pizza. Definitely that first muffin, the, the fresh berry muffins in the morning, get some coffee. So get out there, enjoy the village, and, uh, that's the report from this end.
Thank you. Trustee Cole?
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Major?
Uh, well, as always, fun things going on at the library. And there seems to be a theme this month, which is dogs. Uh, there's a film coming up, uh, Saturday, September seventh, which is, uh, A Dog's Way Home, based on the twenty seventeen book with the same name, A Heartwarming and Uplifting Tale About the Unbreakable Bond Between Men and Dogs. So this is, uh, Friday, September sixth, five P M. Looks like a weeper. My dogs are encouraging me to go, but I, I don't think I can.
I think I'll bring, uh, I'll bring some clams.
Yeah, bring some clams. There will be snacks provided.
Oh, that'll.
So that actually looks like a lot of fun. And also, uh, a popular program lately is, um, Pause to Read, which is an opportunity for, um, middle school kids to come and improve their literacy skills and read to Wilson, the certified therapy dog. So that's every other Monday from four to five.
Is that P A W S?
Yes. Naturally. So, uh, and as always, great things going on at the library. So check it out, um, Tivoli Library dot org. Uh, and passes are available for Olana and Mid Hudson Children's Museum. And you can check those out at the circulation desk. All of the historic sites are beautiful right now. So I encourage everyone to go out, not in the middle of the day when it's too hot and you might expire, but, um,
Or at least perspire.
Perspire.
Hope for that.
Leading to expiration, yes. So, uh, Montgomery Place, dawn to dusk, dawn to dusk. And at Clermont, the next Harmony's on the Hudson event is, um, Thursday, September fifth, six P M. Great opportunity to take a picnic, enjoy the sunset, look at the river, hear a little music. Olana has an interesting event going on. It's their annual summer market, um, this weekend from ten to five both days. And it's local artisans and there's music and there's different restaurants, food trucks, events. And you can go and just check out the landscape. It is incredible. I haven't been up there in a while. And just to go and walk around and just see this architectural wonder and, uh, you know, eat some stuff, never a bad idea. Uh, there's also an ongoing, um, exhibition up there called, uh, Architecture in Conversation with Nature. And that sort of highlights the outdoor, indoor, outdoor transitional spaces. Anyway, just, it's a cool thing. And the canoe launch is still out.
What's, what's up with that?
I don't know. Um, I know that the plan got, this was going to Red Hook to planning work for looking at, and it looked good, but that was months ago, so. I don't know. If you want to get in the river right now, you gotta go to, um, go to the river down here. And planning continues for our Eleanor Roosevelt event. I want to get everybody whooped up here. I'm, I'm a little upset that we didn't bring, you know, Rowan to sit with us tonight, but, see if you can zoom in on this. This is, this is an artist's rendering, otherwise known as the mayor's rendering, of, uh, what we're, what we're planning for the site up on Woods Road next to St. Paul's. If you're wandering up that way, you can see we sort of staked out where the patio will be. And, um, we're just getting very excited about planning the, um, the day. We've got a lot of speakers lined up, um, you know, to talk about, you know, it's a, it's about Eleanor Roosevelt. It's about Eleanor Roosevelt in Tivoli. It's about, you know, how, uh, how she became this amazing person, which led into her commitment to, you know, human rights and the Universal Declaration. And we're going to pull that sort of line straight into the present and talk about, um, what, what human rights means now and, um, how it really, uh, we are, we are all humans and we all have basic rights and, um, the more we can sort of see how this incredible seventy-year-old document is put into practice in our community, and it just, the, the better for everyone, you know. We, I think we have to be looking each other in the eye and appreciating each other's humanity and respecting one another. You know, now more than ever, or, you know, now especially, or, uh,
We have a great committee working on this and it's been very interesting because we meet every week or two. And given national and world events, as we meet, you know, sometimes from one Wednesday to the next Wednesday, our understanding of the importance of this celebration and this weekend of conversation is getting more and more poignant as we realize, wow, you know, and so you can act locally, you're aware globally, but the conversation about human rights and what communities can do to respect themselves and others, it's getting so relevant and poignant. It wasn't like, it kind of started more of like, what's the history of Eleanor Roosevelt and she helped us get the water tower? It's not a history lesson alone anymore. It is very much, this is something that Tivoli is going to put forth and remind everyone and, and bring to the present.
Can I read the, the words that she used, um, when she, in a presentation of the Declaration of Human Rights?
I got it all right here.
She's got it all right there, yeah. Everybody's got a copy.
Yeah.
Susan, do you want to?
She's, she said, where after all do universal human rights begin? In small places, close to home, so close and so small that they cannot be seen on any maps of the world. Yet they are the world of the individual person, the neighborhood he lives in, the school or college he attends, the factory farm or office where he works. Such are the places where every man, woman, and child seeks equal justice, equal opportunity, equal dignity without discrimination. Unless these rights have meaning there, they have little meaning anywhere. Without concerted citizen action to uphold them close to home, we shall look in vain for progress in the larger world.
It's just beautifully crafted. I can't think of a more authentic illustration of that, the embodiment of her statement there than Tivoli. So I think it's extremely appropriate.
Well, I think it's great, too, that we will have a site, you know, sort of a site of reflection where you can sort of go and, you know.
So we are going to be, uh, using some of the historic blue stone from an ancient sidewalk that's been sort of buried over On Woods Road. We've talked to SHPO, which is the state historic preservation office.
State Parks Rec and Historic Preservation?
Yes, and they said you should use this stone in other applications around the village. So, um, it's been buried, which is good because it's preserved it. So we're going to use that to make our little patio. There'll be some benches for reflection. If you've come the long way around the loop and you're ready to sit down for a moment, you can sit with Eleanor before you continue the rest of the way. And the calendar for that weekend is on Friday the fifth, on Friday the eleventh?
Friday.
Friday, October eleventh, we're gonna have, which is her actual birthday. We're gonna have some sort of brief kickoff here at seven o'clock with maybe some music refreshments, kind of give you all the overview. Ten A M. on that Saturday, uh, we're going to be out there on site, um, and do the ribbon cutting. We hope to get a great crowd. We'll probably close the road and direct traffic around, um, through Elizabeth and through the development. And then we're gonna have a series of lectures, talks, kind of things that are still being organized by our great little committee. So it's going to be about her history in Tivoli, what's her connection? And it's going to be a lot about what are human rights? Why do they matter? Why, why is any of this relevant today?
And this is really, you know, an event for all ages, you know. We have, we have some really good, uh, ways to talk about human rights with kids, um, and.
County Human Rights Commission's gonna participate?
County Human Rights Commission. We have some, some commissioners and, um, yeah, I'm really excited about this. And Susan, I'm so impressed that you were able to read that without tearing up because it's gotten to the point where I can't.
I was getting there.
Save the date. Uh, I believe that, is that Columbus Day weekend?
It is, yes.
October eleventh, twelfth, um, Eleanor Roosevelt here in Tivoli. I'm sure you have seen the, uh, cyclopean structure that went up last week just outside this building. It's huge. That is our temporary firehouse. It is a, um, steel and, uh, it's kind of, uh, it's not in the F, like, plastic panel, fabric roof. So that is a temporary firehouse that's covered under the insurance. We've leased it for twelve months, which we hope is what it's going to take us to rebuild the actual firehouse. We looked around for the best place to put it, and like many things, this reminds me of when we cited the bus stop, we ended up with the least worst, which isn't the same as the best, but it's still the best because it's the least worst. So we have, uh, found a good, safe, temporary home for our equipment, which is great. And that helps the function, functionality of our, uh, first responders right now. However, there is no question that this is an inconvenience in terms of parking. And that's just something that we all have to tighten our belt and live with. And, you know, this is a busy hub for life in the village. You've got the fire department, the American Legion of the Library, Village Hall, uh, all the activities that go on here. And not only do we lose the parking where that building sits, but all the parking on the west side because the vehicles need to be able to make the turn. And the fire parking zone in front of the old firehouse where the road is striped, picture that moving eastward. So we've got some cones and signs out there. That's going to be basically for a year. This is the parking situation. So, um, I've had complaints. I am not naive to think I won't get more, but we got to do this. So please bear with us, you know. It won't hurt to stretch your legs, hopefully walk a little further. But if those trucks can't make that turn and get in and out, we have much more important problems, bigger problems, so.
I think it's important to keep it all in perspective here.
It is a fair trade, a little inconvenience for health, safety, well-being of our.
Yes.
Community.
One thing with that, um, the fire department, along with the help of our Redwood, all of the equipment was moved in on Monday evening.
Yes.
And it's all one hundred percent in service.
That's great. That's wonderful. And I just want to let people know as far as, um, you know, wheelchair access to this building, if you go around and behind the temporary building over sort of to the east side of the legion, you can park there and the, um, access, it's, it's narrow, but it's wide enough. You can get in, um, to the back door of this building, access the elevator. So that's still accessible.
You should really restrict that to your handicap accessible. We should really restrict that to handicap accessibility, shouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah. We will make sure that it's all marked out there appropriately. So that's our temporary firehouse and the unfortunate but necessary parking restrictions that are going to be all around this building for a year. The solar farm, the community solar project that's being handled by the company Sun Common is still cooking right now, and they have extended the sign-up period, privileging village residents. So if you haven't heard any of this, the three municipalities, Village Tivoli, Village Red Hook, Town of Red Hook, are going in on a community solar farm. This is all going to be housed in the village of Red Hook. And about fifteen percent of all the solar panels are going to offset the electrical costs of the three municipalities. That's going to help us keep everyone's taxes down because our energy bills, at least with current energy prices, are going to be lower. Also, it's all coming from solar energy, which is an important thing. It's not just what you're paying, but what are you burning? What are you doing to the planet to get your cheap energy? So there's that. They are trying to get about two hundred fifty households to sign up in addition to the municipal customers. I think it's a total of two fifty between, within the town. They've reached, I think, half that, one hundred twenty-five, one hundred thirty or so. And their idea was to give a head start to village residents. Then at a certain point, which has now been extended to August thirtieth, they're going to open it up to town. Part of the idea here is, if you live in the village, maybe you don't have a yard for solar panels. Maybe you've got a historic house or trees or some other reason why you can't have solar...
Maybe you're a resident in the condominium complex.
Right. So this way, and I have signed up myself, like, I don't have to put solar panels up where I live. I live someplace where I can't, but I still am using solar panels for my electric. It's a great opportunity. It's clean energy. It's a great thing to look into. And the Sun Common folks who can help you, they can answer your questions, they can get you signed up. They're at Red Hook Town Hall every Monday from five to seven PM. You can also go to Sun Common's website. Just Google Sun Common, get in there. They can sign you up. And you can also email them at goesolar@suncommon.com. So there are lots of ways to educate yourself and get signed up.
It's really easy.
It's really easy.
Maybe it takes like five minutes on the phone. And you're looking at an average savings of, what, like, ten percent?
Yes.
As well as doing right above the planet, you know, actually.
And then, you know, you can help out your municipalities who have your, you know, set your taxes too because we want this whole thing to fill up and be successful so that the municipalities are getting their bit as well, so that the taxes we all pay to our electric bills get the benefit of this farm. So look into it and sign up. We had our second, I don't know which is going to be more successful, but our second annual cleanup day since we were last here. We had just under fifty households again. And once again, it was such a popular thing. People come up later and they're like, "I love cleanup day." It's been a tremendous convenience. Our committee is here, so thanks again. Our citizens of the year, Glenn and Leslie Baker, you know. Our village government is small and we can always use the help from citizens to get things done that we all want. And, you know, what you've done is a perfect example and we're very grateful, and your fellow residents are as well.
So do we have the tonnage or what was supposed to be?
Yeah. See, this is like, we don't get to guess the, we don't get to guess the rain anymore. No betting yet. We don't have the answer, so... We're anxious to know. Last year it was twelve point something. So I don't think we've gotten the bill in the tonnage yet. Is that correct?
Tons, right?
Yeah, tons. But we will be sure to find out. Some people think it was more, some people think it was less. You have a feeling? You want to place an early wager?
I think it may be about the same, maybe a little bit more. I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they bill us by the ton, so they'll...
Oh, I know, but I mean, before I had...
Feelings, just feelings. Price is right, still. Closer without going over.
It's like guessing the jelly beans in the jar. How much crud is in that pile of stuff?
Let's hope there's more.
Yeah.
So again, I expect we'll do it again next year, don't you think? I think we should. We'll keep doing it till it's not necessary, but from what I hear...
I'll never have.
Yards have a day, I think that's...
I should look forward to that day.
Really perfect follow-up to Yards have a day.
Because we, we exchange all of our junk.
That's right. We distribute it.
And then whatever is left over is junk, right?
It's the permanent wheel of cookie jars.
I will also say, because I'm sure there's somebody watching, we are so excited about this event and happy to provide the service, but if you can actually register sort of like not that morning, that would be great. Because our clerk has worked very hard scrambling up until like, after, they're literally doing the rounds already and we're still getting people calling. And that gets very tricky and it's unfair to your fellows who've signed up early. It's a lot of headaches for us and it might stress you out because we might have to say, "We can't do it." So just sign up early. You know, we started announcing this in June, July. It's in August. There's plenty of time. So early bird gets rid of their junk. Congratulations to the Tivoli Fire Department, Red Hook Fire Department. Thank you to everyone on that committee who gave us just a tremendous day in the village of Red Hook. And, you know, the weather held out for the parade. And then even at the firehouse, when it rained, we were all shoulder to shoulder with our fried dough and sausage and peppers shoved into the firehouse. And, you know, congratulations to all the companies who won those enormously tall awards.
Big trophies.
Big trophies, yeah. And it was just a great, a great day and a wonderful evening. As the deputy mayor had asked, we are expecting work to begin on Pine Street soon. If it's not August twenty-seventh, it's going to be September first. We're getting there. They're going to be moving poles, moving a hydrant, tearing out all that sidewalk on the south side and doing new sidewalk from opposite the bus stop all the way to North Road with a bioswale and about half of it, which is a drainage feature that holds water and will help with some of the flooding and puddling that we've had over there. And also, you, you'll see, you've probably already seen some activity at the park. We are installing a wheelchair swing. We removed an ancient piece of equipment, which I learned was donated to the village by the American Legion when that frost went in, yeah. It served many generations of children and it was a little old. It was also right where we want to put the wheelchair swing, closest to the vehicle access. So that's being installed currently, sort of in process. And with all this rain, that has filled up like a mud puddle.
Quite a lot.
Yeah, quite a lot. So that's coming. There's also going to be a very nice memorial bench going in for a family who lost a loved one. That'll be going nearby. We're going to do these two projects together. They both involve pouring concrete. We're going to get it framed out and then do all the concrete all at once. So some activity at the entrance to Memorial Park there. Trustees, at this time, we'd like to open the floor to public comment. We've talked to its submission, right? Blah, blah, blah. Hey, we're always glad when you're here. It's great to not talk to an Instagram. And, you know, thank you for being here. So if you think of anything, you know how to find us. And thank you also for sitting in the E-waste. That was great. How'd you do on the E-waste? We got some?
Oh, yeah. We did get some.
After I figured out...
We made the rooster rub it.
Yeah. Good, good.
So I think we had more than we did last year.
Yeah?
There's many TVs.
Trustees, I have one more thing before we adjourn, but is there anything else that any board members have to say? We have a, a nice tradition here that when we live as a resident in the village, we adjourn in their memory. And so I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn this August twenty nineteen meeting in memory of Patricia Mangieri. Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned in memory of Pat Mangieri. It's eight oh six PM. Thank you all very much.